All right, at 6:30 we'll call the meeting to order. If we could start with the Pledge of Allegiance, please. All right, do we have any additions to the agenda tonight? Hearing none, I'll look for motion to approve the agenda as presented. We have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same side. Motion carries four zero. That will open us up for public comments. If there's anyone who would like to discuss anything that is not on the agenda, please come forward. Seeing none, we'll close public comments, move to consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that needs to be pulled for further discussion? Just one typo, Maggie, on the minutes from February 24th, on page five. Up at the very top said the regular meeting was called to order by Mayor Dodge. That should be Vice Mayor Voder. Hearing nothing else, I'll look for motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll make that motion.
Motion, do we have a second?
A second.
Motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed, same side. Motion carries four zero. Then we'll roll right into six one A, the 2020 Long Term Plan. Steve is going to present.
And I'll just, oh, yep, Steve McDonald from ABDO, Ica Meyer will be presenting and asking for feedback on the 2020 Long Term Plan. And so we do this every year and it's compiled and used by the city to plan for projects accordingly with the resources we have available. And includes kind of property tax information, tax rate, fund balance, debt projections. And at this time, it is a five-year, but projections go through December 31st, 2025.
Okay.
All right, thank you. Well, thanks for the opportunity to get in front of you to go through the Long Term Plan. This is a process that we've done over the past few years. Once the audit's complete and you have final numbers for 2019. Thing to keep in mind is that we're focused on really three areas. The cash that you have on hand and how that's going to be used over the next five years. Your CIP, both in equipment, streets, and any other infrastructure is all considered. And then any debt financing that's done. So we consider all of your current debt, forecast that out, and then also make some assumptions on potential new debt. So Maggie, if you want to go to page eight. All of those, so those three things are really the big picture of the city's financial health. Oh, the, of the... Okay, yeah, let's stop there. So the key thing I wanted to focus on first is the assumptions that were used. So inflation assumptions were used for expenses over the five-year period. For operating expenses, that'd be a 3% increase. Revenue growth, we assumed a more conservative 2%. And then interest earnings on cash and investment is 1%. 2019, you probably earned a little bit better than that, but that has tanked pretty quickly, long-term rates, in the last, just in the last week or two. It's really gone down. But, and then the specific housing growth assumptions, because again, that drives tax rate, that drives the taxable tax capacity that's in town. That's on the next page. And we assumed over the next five years about 25 homes a year and one or two commercial properties coming into the city. So that then calculates to tax capacity, which we use for the tax rate calculation. The bullets underneath are more generic. So each of, each of the capital improvement funds have a CIP associated with them. I'll go through those because I think it's important to just see what's included in the CIP. And then we, the general fund tax levy is really a balancing number. So what's forecasted for the general fund minus whatever known revenue sources, whatever's left is really the tax levy. And it is fairly consistent over that year, so there aren't a lot of spikes in that. And then bond proceeds, when that was assumed, we assumed a 2% to 3% increase. I think 3%, 3.5% seems to be pretty common right now. Okay, next page. Some of the highlights, there's just a lot of narrative in here. I'll get, let's just go to some of the tables because I think that'll give some better information. Okay, the way this is organized is that we've taken what you're familiar with from the audit perspective, so revenue and expenses for the general fund, and then forecasted out for the five or six years. So we have a year of history with the 2019 projected amounts. That's where you finished after the audit, 2019. So you had $108,000 increase. And then, as I mentioned before, we forecast a break-even budget in the general fund. Okay, page 14 and 15. This, this is the first schedule that I would say helps give you a big-picture idea of what's going on in the city. 2020 is your adopted levy. So in total, that $1,235 is what you approved last December. And you can see all of the line items where that was intended to go. So you started, or you took the, what had previously been kept in the general fund, the streets, equipment, and parks, and have those specifically identified. So if you go to the next page, those, those carry out for the life of the projection. The, the orange or brown, or whatever color you want to call that, is whatever we had forecast for tax levy to help support any bonds issued. So we projected, and I'll go through the CIP, but we have street bonds forecasted and fire station bonds included in there. Okay, let's go, okay, next, the next page. Okay, one of the other key big-picture items when it comes to taxes is tax rates. You don't necessarily set as a target to have a declining or increasing tax rate, but it's one of the key measurements that people look at. It gives context to how you do compared to other, other communities in the county, actually any other community in the state. So 2020, you're projected at about 50% tax rate, that fourth line down. If we go to the next page, I'll point out just a couple of things here. The 2024 is a, is a big spike. And that's going to be managed, I think, when we get to it. The, the reason for that is that's the year that the fire station bonds are issued, plus there's some street bonds forecasted. When we get to that point, we'll be managing the principal repayments to help even that out because that'll be, that would be a big tax increase. And then it does come back down in 2025. So we tried to manage things to when bonds are coming off. But we're trying to be strategic about that. Okay? Cash balances, this is, these are all of the funds of the city. So when you get to the bottom line, go down to the, the total. Right now, we've got about five, about $6 million in cash in the city. And it's spread out, your, the funds with the largest cash are water, sewer, and general fund. So they're well-funded. Your general fund at the current time, I don't know, did you approve that resolution?
Not yet.
Transferring out?
No.
Okay, so that's something you're considering is, is you have, you have funds above the 50% working capital target in the general fund. That gives you the opportunity to help fund some of the CIP funds. It's a good process. And then your water and sewer also have healthy cash balances at the end of the year. So a lot of positives on how we finished 2019. So if you go to the next page and go to the bottom of that, cash position over the five-year period, that's also something that you want to pay attention to. If, if that were dropping precipitously, you'd want to know why. You can see from the projection that it's maintaining at a pretty consistent level. It does increase a lot in that last year. Once we get out to that side, there's some revenue increases and just overall profitability of the funds aren't certain. But you can see it's hung around 5.3 to 5.5 million, so consistent cash balances. Okay, the next page are the outstanding debt. So we've divided this up into two things, the existing debt and then what's projected for future. So you can see at the end of 2019, at the bottom, we have bonds outstanding of $4.6 million. For the existing debt, by the end of the, the projection period, 2025, you're going to go from $4.6 million to $222,000. So you're paying off a lot of debt over the next, next five years. So that 222 is in the middle of the page, on page 21. And then we do forecast bonds being issued. That the balances at the end of 2025 would be about 5.8 million. And I'll go through some graphs that'll help give some pictures of this. Okay, so here's the one thing I wanted to hit on. This, so this is your street fund. And these are the projects that we'd identified here in the last, within the last month or so. The, I think you're getting bids on one of them tonight, right?
Yes, yeah, the Cold Water Crossing.
Yep, and then that 2021, that $294,000 assumes a special assessment. So that project is actually like $400,000 or thereabout. 30% of that project was assumed to be assessed. As I understand it, it's a reconstruction project and subject to your special assessment policy. But all those should match up to the last CIP that was out there. So we forecast the street fund based on those projects. If you want to go, let's see, go a few pages ahead here to 28, to the equipment fund. Go on, another page. Another, another one. Two more. Okay, so here's the equipment fund CIP. You can see the items that we have. The Mack snowplow truck, we paid for about half of that in 2019. So this just shows the 2020 amount that's outstanding. So that comes out of cash at that point. And then a number of equipment purchases projected for 2020. The plow and the track, John Deere tractor and that Kubuta RTV, those were all projected for 2020. So, and again, nothing, none of this is written in stone and doesn't force you into buying decision. It's just a plan. And if it makes sense, you know, when you get to that time where you have to make a decision, you at least have the financial information to see that. Okay? I'm probably spending a lot more time on these, the equipment things, but this is really the driver of the, of the plan. Okay, fire equipment, Fund 210. Biggest thing there is a tanker projected in 2021. Again, it's, the, the message there is that if you're certain it's going to happen in 2021, at least you've got the plan to support it. If it gets pushed out, that's certainly not the worst thing in the world either. Okay? Fund 220 is the next one, which is Parks Fund. And all of those projects were identified in the CIP recently. Let's see, I don't, the, the, if you go to page 38 or 39, let's go down a little bit. One, one more page down. And if you're tracking in the book, you can see that the $100,000 at the very top line, that's the tax levy. So it's assumed that tax levy continues over the next five years. That's basically how those park projects will be funded. You have some reserves currently in parks. You see that we do have a deficit in 2023 and 2024. I didn't assume any bonding because that amount can be pretty easily internally financed. So I don't see that as a, as a big red flag. We do come out of that in 2025. Okay, next page, the facilities fund. Here's where the fire station, it shows up in 2021. I think you'd gotten some information from Ellers or PFA, or not PFA, but showing potential financing for this. And we've, we've used that information that Ellers put together in this. I think there are a number of options. We included the one in here that smoothes the tax rate the best. So the principal payments are out two or three more years. Okay, and then water fund. Let's see, yeah, here we go. We've assumed cash for the water tower painting. So that's the $340,000 plus the engineering of $70,000. And then the other projects were assumed bonding. And again, this was looking at the cash balances that were in the, in the water fund. It appears like the 30, the $300,000 for the painting won't put the water fund in, in any deficit cash position, still healthy cash balance.
So that's what you would recommend is to pay cash for that project?
Yeah, since you, it, the water fund is well-funded right now. And based on cash flow, it looks like it will support that payment.
And, yeah, that was our whole plan with our...
Yeah, just kind of, I was talking to Steve about, you know, just, I know we've had past discussions on, you know, when can we use cash instead of bonding? And like, when would it make sense to use, you know, the reserves? It, it just seems in this case, it makes sense, so...
Yeah, and a good example is the, like the streets that we talked about last week. That the street project that you're bidding now, you have cash for it and you also have that tax levy coming in. You'd have enough cash to pay for that project now because you have this series of street projects coming up over the next four or five years. It would allow you to get one more year out before you'd have to issue bonds. And if you have the cash available for a project like that, it makes sense. And it's small enough where the cost of financing those ends up being more, so...
That still keeps us above that 50% by...
You add the 50.
50% doing all these projects you're recommending cash for this year.
Okay, let's look at the pictures. So we've graphed out pretty much everything that I just talked about. And the first one is the general fund. Now, the general fund's the easiest to kind of graph out. We've talked about balancing revenue and expenditures. And the red line is your target fund balance. At the current level, you've got a healthy fund balance. And you are considering transferring out excess, or funds above that target. So if that's the decision that's made, then that purple line or blue line will go down the following year, but you'll still have adequate working capital reserve. Okay? Go to the next page. Okay, so cash balance by plan to use. This graph is putting together the, the entirety of the cash balances of the city. And again, it supports what I mentioned as we're going through the table, that our cash balances are pretty consistent, around $6 million over the, the years projected. So 2020 through 2025, little typo, I didn't include the 2025 in there. But you can see that the, the, the bottom, the colors translate to the type of funds. The big ones are the enterprise funds are the biggest portion of your cash balances. That stays consistent. And then the very bottom is your general fund cash balance. So when you see those on, on paper, it does give you an idea on where the, the funds reside. Okay? Tax rates, so you can see from 2020 to 2023, it stays pretty consistent. And then that bump in 2024, that we'll be able to manage as you get closer to that timeframe. But, you know, based on if you just put everything in there on what we need to, to finance in any given year, that just shows you that it might go up in 2024.
When you say manage, what, what do you mean by that?
Because debt's driving it. The, the ability to take a, the amortization of that bond and move out principal a couple of years, it's, it's what's really proposed for that fire station. Instead of like, we issue, say we issued a bond this year. Theoretically, if you did a mortgage, you'd start paying on it next year almost immediately. With public financing, you have the opportunity to move that out a year or two, just structuring your bonds a little bit better. So then you get a couple of years and now one of the older bonds drops off, keeps your tax rate about the same. So that's a common strategy and, and it does help you manage the tax rate.
That, this graph doesn't do what you just talked about?
Right, it's, this is just a, based on what, what is assumed. We're assuming a payback of the principal right away. This just shows you the effect of that.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I understand what...
Okay. All right, next one. Tax rates.
That's also assuming everything went through as planned.
Yeah.
Everything in here got purchased, done.
Yep, yep. Yeah, compared to comparable cities or cities in the, in the county, you can see your tax rate compares favorably. If lower is better, then that's where you end up and that's good. And even with the 20, the 2020 estimate stays consistent. We don't have the estimates for the other, other cities. I think this one's useful too because this helps give context to the amount of your levy that comes in for, to fund CIP. So currently in 2019, you know, you didn't have any tax levy going into the CIP funds. 2020, you started with the 100,000, or the $300,000. That's that red, the top. So you can see the effect of funding CIP. Gets a little bit bigger each year. In 2024, ties back to those bonds. It's a fairly significant amount to fund that. And it's the challenge that I think a lot of cities have around streets and funding those projects is that, you know, the future gets more and more expensive. Okay? And then the projected tax impact, so this is a combo graph that shows, the, the blue line shows the amount of the tax levy for a specific valued home. So we're starting at about $230,000, that's the red line. And then as the values go up, it's showing the tax rate staying fairly consistent. So again, I think that's important to show that based on this plan, taxes are staying at a consistent dollar amount. Again, the 2024 year is the year we need to manage, but that's, that's the additional project. And then these are the debt balances. So overall bonds that have been issued, this is the outstanding amount that you owe on those bond obligations. 2019 and 2020 are around that $5 million. And then based on the fire station, that's the purple. That's a significant bond amount relative to what you currently have. So it pushes the total amounts of bonds outstanding. And then the debt per capita follows, it's the same pattern as, as those bonds. So debt per capita, now it's gotten down to about $2,000 a person. That will bump up somewhere between 3,000 and 3,500 in a couple of those years. Okay, so that, that's the, walks you through the big picture of where you end up in cash, taxes, and bonding based on the CIP that you've got in place. So each year, you, when you plan out the CIP, you can see the, see how this affects the overall city finances. Is there any questions I can take?
No, and again, it's a great, it's a great plan. It's certainly a useful tool, you know, for us to get through. Like I said, we'll keep an eye on that, those end years and try to get ahead of those throughout the years and see what we can do with it.
Yeah, and it's, it's something, like, each year, it's kind of a changing document. So it's kind of like we reassess each year where we're at and kind of how things are looking, so...
Yeah, you have a healthy cash reserves and it's really a position of strength to be able to use those cash reserves and plan out those, those future projects.
That's perfect, thank you.
All right, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
See ya.
Okay, Maggie, let's go to six one B, the five-year street reconstruction plan.
Okay, so going off of kind of our five-year plan, we do have, we have worked with Bolton and Mink in the past to put together a street reconstruction plan for the next 10 or so years. And so as part of that, I've been working with ABDO and Ellers to come up with a plan as to how we're going to finance those projects. So according to state statute, in order to levy debt or bonds for, for street reconstruction projects, we need to have a five-year street reconstruction plan in place in order to, to finance and get those bonds and scheduled. And so in here is a draft. In your packet is a draft five-year street reconstruction plan that's based off of Bolton and Mink's plan that they did for us, the schedule. And so what we would do next, if, if you are, if this is the way you agree to finance it, again, as Steve said, we can do the first year in cash and then bond when we need to probably, we can either bond in 2020 and then repay ourselves back, or we can bond in 2021. We just need to kind of move forward with this plan in order to, to get those bonds, the bond plan moving forward. So as part of that, we would need to, if the council agrees, we'd have to issue, call for a public hearing either on March 23rd or later to accept comment on the five-year street plan. That's part of state statute. And then at the, at the public hearing date, we could then approve and discuss and approve the plan. And so with that, I, we do have our first phase of the schedule starting in 2021. That's the Cold Water Crossing development. That's a mill and overlay project. Again, we do feel that we could pay for cash out of our streets capital fund. But moving forward, while we are levying a certain amount each year for our, to replenish our street capital fund, we also, we don't have enough to finance it completely. So we would have to, to bond for, for the remainder of the projects. So right now, in order for the bonds, those bonds be issued, we have to prepare, which we do have a draft plan in place in the packet. We do need to conduct a public hearing. And then we would have to approve the street reconstruction plan. So tonight, we're, it's more of a discussion if you want to call for that public hearing at this time or if you want to wait. I did, in, on page 74, there is kind of when we would be issuing those bonds for those projects. There'd be some in 2020, some in 2022, and some in 2024. And that would be a total of $2,110,000 to finance, to finance those projects that we have identified. Yes, it does. Yep, yep. So that, yep, I did make sure that that aligns with Steve's plan, plan that he just presented to us.
So today, we go out and start this and start looking at the bonds. We have to have this in place.
We do. Yep, yep.
What if something changes on that five, do you have to stick then to that exact five-year plan?
Um, no, so this, the five-year reconstruction plan that's in front of you, that is more of a plan that we would have to stick to, that, this plan, the one with Ellers. ABDO, that's just a document that we use internally. It's, it's a working document that can be changed at any time.
But if we approve this plan, we have to stick with this plan?
Yes. Yep. So...
So, okay, we could technically pay cash, which is what we talked about tonight.
For 2020.
Do you have to then have this open, this public hearing now and take the bonds now? Or can that, for us to like review again to make sure that we're still in line with these projects?
So when I did talk with Ellers, they said, they recommended moving forward with this just in case, you know, you have both options. You can pay, you can, when you get to that time where you want to choose to pay with cash or bond, you would have this in place. I, I believe, we just haven't gone to that discussion yet, how we're going to pay for it. I believe the, like Steve said, and we can pay with cash this year. We just haven't gotten to that point yet. But Ellers wants us to get moving forward with this plan. So when we do, when we do... when we do choose to go out for it, which we will have to, we'll have it in place. But if.
But we're locked into it.
Yeah, so this would be.
We have to know if we're paying cash or not, correct?
Not necessarily. So if you do pay with cash, this like plan, you can, you can still levy for that and replenish with the bond payment. Or I guess I can ask Todd with Ellers to reexamine if we would then, if it would change the bond amount, if we would just pay cash and then do a lesser bond. So.
I guess I just feel like I'm not ready to, I mean, we've looked at all these projects, but for me, I would, I need to like talk about it more. And then especially the 2021, the reconstruction. That was kind of the first time I heard about assessing. You know, and understanding that process because, so would you bond, you bond for the whole amount and then you assess and then those, you get that money back?
Yep, so essentially our assessment policy allows us to assess up to 30% of the project. And so, yeah, you would pay for it and then you, you get that money back through assessments over.
A period of time. That's just where I'm sitting. Like I want to look at the projects again, like which streets were they? Because I know we had that five-year, that's just me, somebody else can.
Yeah, and I. No, I think.
I just feel like I'm not ready to say, yeah, I want to bond for $2 million this year. You know, you know, that's just, that's just kind of where I'm, that's where I'm sitting with all the big projects.
If we pay for the 2020 project with cash, I think we will be fine waiting on this process. So we can.
That's the point. We were putting $100,000 the last two years we started, which would cover that first project. And then I would rather than talk about that five-year plan again and make sure that can any of these get moved out? Or do we still feel like this is the exact schedule we're in? I mean, I know you guys did it and I don't, don't want to change what you've done, but I know there was some flexibility.
I think you want to have your financial person here to answer these questions. But if, if you were to bond for the whole project at one time, then you have to have a public hearing, lay out the plans. And basically you're, you're approving the amount that you would bond for, to cover the cost of these projects over that period of time. Now, I don't know what conversations you've had, but the other way to do it is to go every year, you take out a, you, you issue a bond for, to cover the project that you're actually going to do and do it as you go. Now, again, I think you have to ask your financial person on, you know, for the advice as to whether or not it tries to, it makes sense to try to do it all at one time or can I take it as you go? You know, it'd be, I, I believe you have time on this if you were going to pay cash for this year's project. If you wanted to bond for it, then assume you're going to move forward with the project, you should get that public hearing scheduled. If you wanted to schedule the public hearing and have your financial advisor here at the public hearing to answer some of those questions, you could probably make those decisions too.
Yeah, I think when he, when I talked to him last, he was under the assumption that we would pay cash for this year, or he had recommended that and then bond the later ones. He, I, the only thing with bonding each year is you have those fees associated with getting bond. So if you have this in place, I think it's, you, you don't have as much of that cost. And so I think that's why he was recommending this route. But again, I think we have time if we pay this year, this year's in cash, which I'll bring back at the next meeting.
I agree with Nikki on that.
Well. Okay, no, that's, that sounds like a good plan.
I mean, it's definitely good for us to see this right now because we've got lots of different projects. And that's my big whole thing is I want to look at it holistically on all the big projects we have and all the bonds we're doing. And to make sure, because if you take them all individually too, sometimes, and you add them together, we could have that problem, like what all the grids were saying for 2024. But having those conversations of understanding that you can bump things out so that it does even out, then I'm way more comfortable in following the plan. But I, I wasn't ready to say, I agree to this five-year plan. I definitely agreed with the stage one. But the fifth street reconstruction was, you know, that was the first time I heard about the assessment part. You know, is, is that the right time, you know, with other projects going on?
Yeah, and honestly, I mean, Fifth Street, we have to have a bigger conversation around that. You know, what is that project? You know, the, there's a lot of decisions to be made there. Right now, it's not an urban section. Are we going to make it an urban section like we have the other streets? Or, you know, anyway, there, there's, there's decisions and some scoping that needs to happen as far as just what that project is and, and then how you pay for it.
Yeah, I'm not ready to say we're doing that in 2021. You know, I mean, we, we could, but I'm just, I'm not ready personally to, until I get more information.
Table this for now, Maggie.
Okay.
All right, Discovery Park, six two A.
Okay. Must have done the memo in the wrong spot. All right, so I'll just bring up the concept plan and then. So a little bit of background. The park commission in their CIP has identified Discovery Park as a the replacement of Discovery Park play equipment as a 2020 project. I'm sorry. And so originally they had budgeted $100,000 to replace the playground equipment. And so they've been having this discussion for quite some time. At their February 11th, 2020 park commission meeting, they held an open house where they invited the publics to comment on, on this project. And we did get about five families with young children in attendance. We did get some positive feedback on this concept plan above. It, it has, as you can see, it has swings. It has a younger kid toddler area. That's the house that you see in the upper part of the playground area. And then you have more of the non-traditional kind of ropes and ropes course and slide system. And that's for an older group of, older age group. So upon getting that feedback, the park commission did meet again on February 18th and they recommended spending up to 85,000 on the replacement of the equipment. And I'll go through that, that a little bit more in detail in a second. This does not include the green poured-in-place turf. And that's going to go back to park commission on the, on March 10th. So the cost for the equipment installation and a 10-year warranty. So if they install it, we do get a 10-year warranty. And the park commission felt strongly about, you know, having that warranty. It does, it does make sense. And then the color scheme is, as you can see up there. But so the total installation would, with the equipment would be 81,094.91. So it is, it's broken down. The, it's, the playground itself is about 58,569.52. And the installation is about 22,125.39. So with that, the park commission did recommend that up to 85,000, but it did come in at 81,000. And so tonight, the, we are, the park commission is requesting that the council review this and, and potentially approve the purchasing of this equipment. Public Works would be responsible for tearing out the old equipment. And then the contractor would then come in and do the. It will be chips, because I think that's a, I think that's standard.
Fit in the current footprint of the.
Yep.
Herbing that we've put in?
Yes.
Are we currently tax exempt?
We are tax exempt. Um, cities are no. I think it's been about four or five years now that we're tax exempt.
What's the turf?
Yeah, so.
Need it, is that, why?
It's more, I think the turf is, the turf was originally included and then they, when they presented it, the quote, there was a miscommunication with the quote. And so it came, the tur, the separate turf came in a lot higher than, than what the original quote that was brought to the park commission was. And so I wanted to bring that back separately.
Have to be there? I mean, it looks like they've installed around it. I'm assuming that's the turf, the green.
So.
Does it have to be?
Well, so here's what the park board was discussing is when we were presented it, we thought that those were included in the numbers. So then when we got the actual bid to, it was very, it wasn't easy to understand what they were actually doing line items. So it came in at 81. So we said, well, we think it's included or we're not sure. So we just said, well, let's approve up to 85,000 so we can at least get it approved and get this on their schedule. Because if we don't approve this now, then it doesn't get on the schedule. And then we're fine, then Maggie found out that that turf wasn't really even included in that original number. So now it's coming back to park board. I would assume that based on the cost, I highly doubt we would go, there would be no need for it.
So that green stuff in there would all go away?
Right, it was just some miscommunication. We thought it was part of the 81.
But it's not required for this system?
No, no.
We don't have to have it?
No. So we'll have that conversation tomorrow. If it comes back, comes back. I can, I, I highly doubt, we have other projects that we want to probably do. So the whole point was to try to get this approved, because if we approve it today, they guaranteed us scheduled for installation right away in the spring after the ones in the fall were purchased and installed.
Tear out the old, they'll install the new. All right, any other questions? If not, I'll look for a motion to approve the Discovery Park playground equip, equipment for 81,094.91.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
So it's going to actually cost the 81?
Yes.
Any other questions? We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries four zero. All right, six three A, 2020 street improvement project.
I'll let Dave jump in on this one. So as you know, we do have, as part of our 10-year street plan, we did, we are starting again in 2020 with the Coldwater Crossing, the more so the old, old schoolhouse drive area and the kind of the first development phase of Coldwater Crossing.
All right, Dave, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, so this is, this is that first phase of Coldwater Crossing. As you recall, when we put the pavement management plan together, the, the, kind of the, the reason for it is that the, the streets that have been built through development over time are all getting to be about the, they're on path here in the next few years to all be 20 years old. So we put together a mill and overlay project or plan to go ahead. And as those pavements were becoming 20 years old, go ahead, mill off the surface, do some kind of repair work to existing curb and gutter, fix some catch basins, items like that. But generally, it's, it's a paving project. We went out for bids for this year's project. We had a good turnout, nine bidders. The low bid was Mueller and Sons for 181,215.40. The engineer's estimate for construction was 206,000, about that. So bids came in underestimate. A good contractor that we've worked with before. So assuming that the city wants to move forward with the project, we'd recommend awarding it to Mueller and Sons.
The only question I have is, where do the sidewalks or trails or what we call them in the neighborhoods? What the, do those fall under the street projects or is that its own separate?
Yep, the, they are, they are not included in the project. We haven't necessarily talked about that, but the assumption is that as those need work or repairs, that they would be handled separately.
Okay, okay.
And again, we, it's at least not included in this project. If that's something we wanted to look at for future projects, we could certainly do that, but we haven't done that.
Some cities will draft like a sidewalk improvement plan, which we can actually.
And the only reason I bring that up is a lot of the sidewalks have dropped. Like on Hidden Creek, there's like half of a sidewalk that just dropped like six, eight inches and ends of driveways that have just dropped. So I didn't know if that would be part of the plan or not, so.
Yeah, it, it, it's not for this first one, but again, that's certainly something we could look at going forward. You know, that, that's another one that may make sense to take that work out, have a separate project. Now, we're, we're addressing trails, just given the nature of the work and, and trying to get good economy of scale for it. But certainly a discussion we can have.
All right, I'll look for a motion to approve the Mueller and Sons bid for the Coldwater Crossing 2020 street project for 181,215.40.
I'll make that motion.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second, any further discussion?
And, and just to clarify then, I just pulled up the map here. So the, the, the project consists of Coldwater Crossing from County Road 30 up around the corner to Big Oak Lane. It's Old Schoolhouse Road and then River Bend Trail from Coldwater Crossing around to basically where it dead ends into future development north of Old Schoolhouse Road.
How do we notify homeowners and how, how does that affect people getting to their homes and?
For this, the, the disruption to residents is fairly minor. I mean, it's, not that there won't be some inconvenience, but we're really not completely shutting people off. And plus, we're right in front of their house. I'll be working with Maggie. We'll put together a letter that can be mailed out to everybody, letting them know what's going on, contact information if they have questions. And then during construction, if there's specific disruptions that, you know, we'll knock on doors and talk with people individually as needed.
And do we know when, will we be ready to road restrictions or?
Yeah, I, no schedule yet, but it's, it's ready to go whenever the contractor can get at it.
We'll have some sort of project manager who will be able to contact for people?
Yes, yep, no, we'll, we'll have, yeah, we'll have the appropriate contact. The person that's going to be out on the road, kind of following the work that's available to them. And then obviously myself or another engineer if there's other related questions.
There probably will be.
Yeah, no, it's, it's like you say, not that there won't be questions, but in the grand scheme of things, this is a little bit more disruptive compared to when we're, we're digging holes.
Any further discussion? We have a motion, a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. She carries four zero. City council reports, Tyus, anything to report on?
Only thing I'm concerned about is the condition of the trails and the sidewalks. I don't know if it's been reported to the city yet. I don't know if Kyle or Jason know. But at least, you know, there's quite a few that have.
I know we've been working on the trails, but yeah, sidewalks. Definitely, we haven't talked about that yet, so that's, that's something we can bring up.
And if he can put cones out there or something.
Okay.
Anything else?
No, Park Board's tomorrow.
Park Board tomorrow, and I've, I have nothing to report on, I was out on vacation for a while. So with that, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
A motion, do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion, a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, same sign. We are adjourned. All right, we can, we'll jump right in and open the workshop.
Okay, so first item is, I know you, you've been waiting for a, a contract with Brunton Architects and Engineer on the fire station. So it's, as you know, the fire department is currently working with Brunton Architects and Engineers on work related to the new fire station. So in order to keep that process moving forward, Brunton and the, the city attorney have been going back and forth with a contract. And the attorney just, we wanted to provide you with an update because that contract isn't complete yet. At this time, both parties are going back and forth. We just want to make sure that it's, that it's, you know, good for the city and that we're being responsible and, and making sure we're comparing with, you know, what have other cities paid in these contracts? Because currently, you know, this is something that could be six digits, you know, this is a big contract for the city. So with that, I just wanted to provide you with an update that it is being worked on. Both, you know, the city attorney is, is aware that this is a priority. The Cory Brunton with Brunton Architects is aware and, and of where this, where it's at, and so one thing we could do if we really feel like we need to stick with a timeline is we can call a special meeting, otherwise it will be March twenty-third that this would likely get on to the city council again, so. So with that
So we can just send an update based on, I mean, we still haven't seen the contract, obviously, right?
Um, a council has not seen it yet. So he just, yeah, again, he wanted to provide a little bit of information about the contract.
Do we have timing on when we think we'll see that? Just because two council members will be gone on the twenty-third meeting.
Right, yeah, and that is something that we're aware of as well, and so that was another reason that we that, and, and also the attorney is out for some of this week as well, so I know that there's that proposed timeline that we had with the fire department, so it's, it's kind of, I know that, again, two, two people are going to be gone, so it's, it's tough to
So there's no projected timeline on when they'll be done negotiating, going back and forth on this contract?
Well, the last I spoke with the attorney, he, he felt that he could get it to the March sixteenth meeting. I just don't know how far in advance, if you call the special meeting.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's why the special meeting came up, because at the fire station meeting, the contract was discussed and we noted that two council members were going to be gone and Brunton, I would say, feels an importance to get this contract straightened out, mostly because he states that it'll take him about four to five months to correctly draw up all the plans and get all that done. And if it puts us behind in the bidding, then he's worried that the bids will go up. Right now, he's confident in the numbers that he's presented to council as far as, you know, his costs for the building.
I mean
So that was why we talked about, let's see if a special meeting is something that is wanted, needed.
I can tell you, for me, in first blush now seeing this and seeing the dollar amount, I'm concerned with. I'm concerned with not doing some kind of bidding process and going out for bid and having it up, I mean, we're talking now at nine percent. We're talking about two hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars. That's a lot of money where I feel we haven't and I understand somehow we're down this far down, down the road again, but for that kind of money, I don't know why we're not outbidding it for an architect. And secondly, I think for that twenty thousand payment, which I'm certain he's, that's for the work he's done, I'd like to see a break, I mean, I need to see some numbers with that. But I'm concerned, one, I don't like how it's structured with the percentage. I think it, it, it gives that indication that, well, that's I'd rather have a dollar amount than a, than a percentage, I think.
So is this something that Tim has brought up, I think, right away to Cory? And at the fire station meeting, Cory said that it's just a matter of semantics, he's not worried about the concerns that Tim had, there's, you know, he was open to changing language or, or, you know, making Tim and the city feel like it's what they want, it's what they
Right, he said that everything that Tim brought up to him was, wasn't anything he hadn't seen before.
Right.
So he wasn't concerned about
He wasn't concerned that he couldn't comply with what was being asked. What's an average rate for, for an engineer, an architect? I mean, this company is, is, if I'm not wrong, an architect, an engineer, well, we pay percentages, don't we?
Uh, you pay us hourly. You, you pay us hourly, usually we try to
If you do a project, you don't get a percentage?
No.
You get paid by the hour.
Yep, and, you know, typically we give you an estimate and then you approve it. What I would say is, for engineering work, when we do projects for you, you know, all kinds of things can go into what the total cost of the services are, a lot of it has to do with kind of your, your process and, and public involvement and different aspects. Generally speaking, you know, twenty-five percent of a project cost is for us probably, somewhere, somewhere in that range when you, when you do the surveying, the, you know, the, the public pieces of it, the, the design, construction, the whole works, so that's I, 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 and I don't know architecture, I, I don't know
We're trying to compare how this lines up with what other people get in this field.
The other way to compare it is go out and have three to four different companies, I mean, similar to what we just did for the street projects, or, then we get a good understanding and we press other, you know, other bids and, you know, ask, sharpen your pencils up a little bit, well, this will make them kind of do some of that too, when they know they're going against when he's the only person bidding it.
My understanding, that's what Tim is doing right now, is getting into sharpening his pencil, right? I don't know.
I have a problem with the nine, it's just the two hundred and eighty-eight thousand plus twenty thousand, we're at three hundred thousand. I think we owe it to the residents to try to get that down.
I would say professional services generally, you know, you the preferred way to do it, from my perspective, is quality-based selection, that, that you're choosing the people that you believe understand your project the best, the people that you feel comfortable working with and
They still need to be responsible.
and tangible, so, I just throw that over.
And I would agree, we still need a responsible bid, and, and our obligation is to take the lowest responsible one, but those are my concerns from seeing that, you know, from seeing Tim's memo.
So I get what you're saying, I do get and understand why you're saying that, I just think that that should have been done before we're invested in this firm. Now, we, we're going to owe money. I don't know why you think the twenty thousand is on top of what he gave us for a breakdown of what it would potentially cost.
Maybe it's not, it's hard to tell, it's hard to tell at Tim's
Right, right.
I mean, if there's movement on that, I mean, I think we should, I would prefer a special meeting on the sixteenth, if the contract could come in and maybe that nine percent is what Tim's working on to try to work through.
It is part of it. We, we're working together to just kind of see what other cities have paid on projects.
Yeah, I just, I just think that, and to speak to what Dave said a little bit, you want someone who's experienced in these things. This is what this company does, and I just think we're too far into it with this architect and engineer right now. He's, you know, handling everything. And whether that was the right decision or not, or whether, you know, we're comfortable with this or not, I think we can be through this contract and Tim, you know, looking over this and making sure it's in the best interest of the city. But I don't think it's a great idea to start over with a brand-new architect.
I respectfully disagree with that. I, I couldn't disagree anymore with this kind of money. If this was a thirty thousand dollar project, I'd probably have a little, you know, I, I think it would be, you know, well, yeah, we're this far, how did we get this far in? Who knows? Should it have happened right around, you know, I'm not saying we don't owe him and he doesn't get what he deserves, is doing business with him, and we, we still want to maintain relationships.
So we pay for that, we pay for a service that we're not even going to be using and going forward with
There's been some work done, there's some work done, but that could get made up in the next bid. Someone else could come in at a hundred thousand less and we've made it up. I, with this amount of money, I, I don't know how we don't do it. I I don't know how we do it.
My thing would be, I would be, you can set it up as other bids, I mean, you're not going to make up a hundred thousand dollars on an architect.
No, no.
And you're saying two ninety. If you just put it out for bids, that's going to push your project out quite a while for you to get that, those numbers back and everything. Now, pushing that out that much farther, just talking about how you get into, you know, it's going to push us back a must, you'll have material costs going up, whatever, anything you're going to potentially save, you're going to lose because you've wasted that time. And you've wasted this time
Speculating, I mean, you're speculating, you're speculating though. I mean, that's not necessarily true, we're, we're using a lot of assumptions, but we still need to do, and I've always said, we got to do what's right, and going out for bids, if it pushes the timeline, it pushes the timeline, I mean, we, we still got to do what's right. And, and I think that's what's right for this kind of money. And, and we can, we've just saw in our last project, the street project, we had a huge variation in those quo, I mean, so we could save some good money. What was the highest one on the street project, two, two sixty?
That's not, that's not
But it's someone bidding a project.
So we're also just talking about the architect, architect right now. We're not talking about labor costs.
No, I
We're not talking about anything else. We're just talking about the architecture, and there's, I, I would have to agree, there's not going to be that much variation in the architecture costs. I mean, you might, there might be up to five thousand dollars, but I can't imagine anything really much higher than five.
It's the wrong process. I just think it's wrong, and just because we're so far in it, we just can't keep doing it wrong, but that's, that's just my opinion on it. Go ahead, Jer.
And nine percent is probably in line. It was, I was involved in a building project with Zion eight years ago, and right then and there, the architect fee was seven percent, is what it was. So it's nine percent now, it's probably not out of line. That's pretty common. If you go out to get architects, you're going to push this project back six months. And you get this one picked, interviewed, picked, and you're looking at raising the price, a hundred fifty is fair, a thousand dollars, you'll know that. Same line, if you want to get another architect now, on the next street project, where you get a couple different engineering costs, you save a couple thousand there.
Oh, but we've
Same thing. You're going to get different engineers, two engineer it.
Oh, really?
You might save a couple thousand.
Engineering, we appoint it yearly, we don't do engineering per, per every contract. I mean, we, we've appointed our engineer, so that's who our engineer is.
What you engineer every year, whatever road project you engineer.
And they do RFPs on it, so. Again, it's just my opinion, it's just my thoughts, it doesn't appear others are, are, are in line with it, so it's probably a moot point.
Well, I mean, I think that the nine percent probably is a negotiable factor. And if Tim is working on our behalf and kind of going
Yeah, some we just don't know yet.
We don't know yet.
We haven't seen anything, so
I'm, I'm just more concerned that if we do bring this contract, that I'd like to have full council to vote.
Some of that we can, some of that we're going to have to try to do full council if we can, but if we can't, we can't, I mean, we just got to still move forward with city business if people can't be there. Now, if we have, we know a couple are out for, for spring break, I get that, I think that's, I think that makes sense. But I don't see a need for a special meeting myself either for this, because I'm more concerned when we do finally see the contract, will we, is it going to take another meeting to get through it? Are we going to have to make some changes? Go back to the, is it going to get done anyways that night? Likely not. So that's just my, again, my thoughts on it, but but to your point, I mean, with two people gone, I would like to have, I would like to have more input because we don't have the plans for spring break.
The other thing about a special meeting is that we can use that time. Can you hold just a workshop? It doesn't have to be a meeting, right?
You can hold a workshop, yeah.
So why couldn't we just hold a workshop?
We could do a workshop.
Where we just only talk about that contract, because that seems to be like something that this council would do, you know, which is and it's important, and none of us have seen it, so if we spent the time just to, to go over that contract and then get it kind of hashed out the way we want it and then maybe get that brought to the next meeting, even if that is the twenty-third, we'll have a good feel if the other two members are on board or we absolutely would have to vote on it and keep moving forward by the first meeting in April. Otherwise, we're going to get messed up on these bids. As far as, that's not very eloquent, but apparently, you know, it's going to take longer to draft those plans, get everything put in place, the four to five months, by then you're in a bidding process where it's not favorable.
Knowing our thing with contracts, I'm pretty sure we will be, even if we waited till the twenty-third, they'll probably be tabled and brought back just on how, for further information, that maybe a work session isn't a bad idea to just hash out some of those things and then bring it back to the
A special meeting just concerning that doesn't have to be all night.
All right, anything else on there?
If council can put in a, a nine percent or not to exceed figure, you could sit on and negotiate that, if that takes that
Right.
I think that's part of what's going on here too. I mean, we, we haven't even seen it, like, I haven't seen the first draft.
Yeah.
Right, right.
I think this, this was just in his concerns that he was seeing in the, the contract and if it sounds like Cory was like, oh, these are all things that I'm not too worried about, there probably is room.
All right, that'll take us to the information session materials for the fire station.
Okay, so I can have other people jump in as well, but the Fire Station Committee has been working on putting together information, like their, kind of what they're going to present at their information meetings with the public coming up. So this is kind of their, the committee's information that we got up here. Just asking for any feedback from the council. I apologize to the, getting it to you this late.
So the only two things I have are on
Yep.
this.
Yep, so, yes, and again, you guys can provide feedback later too. I, the, we've been working back and forth with Brunton and we didn't get it until this, this evening, so, right before the meeting, so just a little bit of overview on what these, there'll be boards set up at the fire station when we do the public information sessions. So there'll be some walkthrough, the public will be able to walk kind of through to see, you know, the visually what's, the constraints are at the current fire station, but then also look at these boards and ask questions of the committee.
The boards are going to have this information, is that what I'm hearing?
Um, so it'll be this information up here.
Oh, so that's going to be a board, that's a board?
This is a board.
Okay.
Yep, so
This would be a mailer that we would send out to
Okay.
Yep, so those are
Inform the public of when this, you know, meeting will be and to give them some
Got it, perfect, thank you.
Yep. So the, I don't know if you guys want to help me, so the first board would be the current facility, kind of the issues that we've, that we currently face, compliance um, the issues that we've, that we currently face, um, compliance-wise and inadequate storage, also poor visibility onto Highway twenty-five, just kind of explaining the, the issues, again, that we're having with the current facility. Um, I will send these out again, like, by email. I didn't, again, sorry that you're getting these right now, but, um, any feedback would be appreciated before these, these meetings are held. Um, second.
You haven't emailed this to us yet?
I haven't. We, I just got them right be.
Now it's on the board.
Right, so I, I just, again, we, I just got these, so.
First blush, I like, I like how it's set up. I think there's a lot of words over on that right-hand side, you know. I like the second one where it was spread out a little bit more. I think it's gonna just be easier.
So these are gonna be easels. These are gonna be easels on this cork board. What'd he say?
And people have their time to read that, because they're in the building here and they're look, or they're in the building and they're being able to read that.
Typically, they won't read that much.
So basically, basically, there'll be stations set up within the fire department to show all of these concerns, all of these reasons why, um, there was talk about putting up some lines and some tape in between the trucks to show the actual distance.
Versus what OSHA recommends, like, yeah, what we have versus what they're recommending.
Right, right.
Yeah, I like that one.
Some signage in the actual bays pointing out areas that are concerned.
Yep. Good, yep.
You can do like a yellow line, this is what we currently have, and here's the blue lines, what OSHA recommends, or whatever color you pick, yeah.
So then this would be the sign. For plans, kinda where the equipment will be placed.
Um, I think they're gonna have a, not only will there be people at the stations with like clipboards and stuff, but some people want to be, uh, voice their opinions in writing, so there's gonna be like a box, a suggestion box, or whatever they're gonna call it.
Perfect. Perfect.
For that. I know that we talked about a safety plan in case there's a call and there's people around, so, um, we kinda need to go over, like, who's gonna do what and what, how that's gonna go down.
We've kinda suggested, I mean, we would have, probably have a, a crew on hand that would respond to call, but then we would kinda usher everybody kinda out of the apparatus bay into the meeting room.
In the meeting room.
Mm-hmm. Go ahead.
Site plan. Uh, he did fly over.
That's who was doing that, okay.
Jerry, yeah. Oh.
Cause I saw somebody flying over the city quite a bit, quite a few times. He kinda went back and forth, back and forth.
The next week.
Like last week or something?
The next week.
So this is, this is a picture of what the, what the city looked like, it, when the fire station was built, about the, the time the fire station was built. And so Jerry put red on all the places that currently have homes. But Brunton has volunteered to fly over on a sunny day and actually get a shot of that same shot.
That would be awesome.
Because it's kind of more like.
That would have a huge impact. To have this and then the other one side by side.
But this is great. What a great picture.
No, but I, I just think it's cool just to see how mayor has grown.
Isn't it amazing?
Like, just as a resident, like, just to have that historical.
And I love this, too. This is great.
The only thing, do we want them to contact Todd Hagan, or should they be contacting you, Maggie? I mean, do we get charged? Do we want residents calling and, and get charged?
Probably me. It would probably be me, yeah. Oh, I didn't even know that was on there.
You probably wanna change that on your flyer here, then.
Yeah.
On the flyer, is it, is this really a seventy-five to a hundred-year building?
Supposed to be, yep.
Oh, okay, but we don't wanna give the, imply that we're gonna be utilizing it for a hundred-year. Cause that's how I read it as we'll be, but we know things will change.
What he's, what he's saying, the construction of the building is made to withstand a seventy-five, a hundred-year-old building.
Okay, that makes sense. That makes sense to me, cause I, I was, I didn't think we would be using it for seventy-five to a hundred, you know, with all the changes and more changes we will see, so.
And then project schedule or tentative.
Good.
So did you do this?
Um.
Who made this?
No, that was, uh, collaboration of our, like, we took our PowerPoints and then.
My name's not spelled. And then, that, please, that should be together. That's it. Those are the only two.
Okay. And, okay, so flyer. Okay, and then, um, the feasibility study. Um, yeah, so that's, um.
Didn't you cut out the fitness room and call it something else? Cause you still have fitness room on this one you might wanna change.
Oh, yeah, we gotta change that.
Cause that's now a day room or, yeah. Oh, I think it looks good.
Um, I just have a general question. Is there, I know that right now for our townships, we only, it's a percentage, but we only charge them for, is it new equipment? They pay a portion of?
Right.
Do we know why we don't? I only ask this is cause I have a friend that is a city administrator out west, and their townships actually pay for part of their building. I'm just curi, I'm just curious. I just don't know how it works.
The value of it and how do you then, what happens if you sell it? And what are we gonna do with the building? And I, I think that's.
Same property.
Yeah.
Like you said, that was the big thing. There's a goal of the townships, we agreed not to, because
Okay.
The lawyer at the back, at that time when we put the addition on, said, don't do that, because, you're gonna, okay, now you wanna sell that building? Okay, we're fine. Ten percent of that.
I was just trying to understand the, yeah, I, it's good to have that history. Yeah, makes complete sense.
Financial nightmare. Such a financial nightmare.
I wouldn't mind getting thirty percent.
So, um.
One other thing, and I know we talked about it, is it worth adding something on one of the boards of some suggestions, what to do with the old station and getting some input?
Oh, asking for suggestions. That would be nice to have.
It'd be good to get the public's input as they come down, if they have some, what they, what they would like to see done with it.
I know the Lions want a library.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I.
Well, no, but it'd be good to get some input. I mean, that's.
Yeah, that's what people want.
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't mean we have to go with what they're saying. I think it's important. We had people come to the park board for the park, and, and people were actually kind of excited that we had it, and just to have conversations about it. Doesn't hurt. I mean, it's.
Opens up communication.
Cause there is value in that building.
Yeah, I gave them the, yeah.
From the PowerPoint?
All right, so you'll send this out, Maggie?
Yes, I'll send these to you.
Okay. All right, anything more?
Looks great.
That looks good.
Yeah, I like it.
Agreed. All right, we'll move to asset management software.
Oh, uh.
Compost site.
Compost site first. Yeah, so this has been kind of, um, something that we've been, I've been wanting to get to you guys, cause, um, the park commission has been interested in using this site possibly for an archery range, and I think the discussion is kind of what's the future of this site. We do currently have a compost recycling site on a little part of it, um, that we share with Carver County Environmental Services. But I know, um, the park commission's look, looking to get a little bit of guidance on kinda what the future of this site, would be used for. So I think one thing we, the park commission ruled out was a dog park, cause it does have kind of some, um, remnants of like.
That's buried, yep.
And stuff, but, um, yeah, so I, I was just getting, you know, just some input on what, just, just a very preliminary discussion on future of this.
Well, what have we, what, have we figured out how we can, I mean, can it stay open? Can we leave it open? Can you fence around it? I know we've talked about it.
We can fence it, so, yeah, so right now, there's been ongoing discussion with the county on kind of, um, what the city can do with regards to having the, um, compost part of it open full-time. We would have to fence it. We'd have to reroute and kinda shuffle things around. Um, we did ask them if we could keep it open all the time, but, and they didn't feel comfortable with that. They felt like there would always have to be somebody manning it to, um, make sure there wasn't illegal dumping.
And if we're gonna do an archery range, we'd want it open.
Right, so we would.
We've talked a lot in Public Works about, about having the compost site open all the time. But then Carver County said, well, the, all this stuff would have to be fenced, because they don't want that open all, so we'd, so I've been trying to find out, can we put a fence around it? Did Public Works get on board with that? And then we can leave the rest open and then look at an archery and have compost open twenty-four seven?
Yeah, so we did look at fencing. We could do it. They would have to reshuffle some things about, about, uh, in that space to make it work, but it is doable.
I'm all for it. I think it's a, I think it's a great spot for an archery range. I think it'd get used, and then we can leave compost open also.
Well, who's gonna manage compost when people are out there just throwing their old garbage out there?
It is po, I mean, that's the risk.
That's some, some of the risk and.
It's gonna happen.
There's, Water Towns is open, NYAs is open. Others leave them, others leave them open. And if it gets abused, we shut it down or put a camera, you know, a camera up and.
A camera or shut it down for.
A trail cam, get people's license plates. But I think we should at least consider it, especially if we can add an archery. I think it's a great.
Just a lot of use, unused space. That would be great for that type of thing.
But I'd like to get a plan on how this will look and how the fence would look. I mean, we, and the entrance going in, and how are we gonna? And is that even the right spot for it? Maybe it goes over the, maybe it gets moved. I, I don't know.
What's to the right there? Are there houses there now? How close are the houses?
Here?
Yeah.
I think this is the fence, so they back, right? Well, this is.
Yeah, I think, um.
This is, um.
Trees.
Uh, kinda wetland stuff, um, holding pond, I believe. And then it's the house there, little.
Has, uh, park board or, or staff looked into the insurance?
Yeah.
If you're out on archery field or an archery.
Yeah, I think we looked at that a couple of years ago and there wasn't.
Our insurance covers it.
Yeah, there wasn't any like additional.
Yeah, we looked into that several years ago when I was on there, and our insurance covers it, as long as we stay within our weapons ordinance. So if they want, if, you know, the bow hunters wanna go out there on site or anything like that, then we'd have to change the weapons ordinance.
That's how close, right here.
And our thought was archery range would shoot towards the river, not towards the homes. And we would have three, like, three lanes, and they would be at different lengths.
And I think we'd put a berm, right?
Yep, and there would be a berm.
Kind of in the back.
Mm-hmm. But there would have to be a parking pad put in. I mean, so there's more than just.
Yeah, there'd be a lot more.
You know, there would be a lot more, but we wanted it to come back to council to talk about this site in general, to see what we, can we do and should we start trying to figure out what it would cost to actually put in an archery range? And do you guys agree that this would be a good location? Cause we didn't wanna start going down any roads, because this is not really our space.
I, I like the idea.
It's the best location I've seen. You're not, you're stuck on doing, putting money into an archery range.
Okay, well, then I think we should start investigating some ways to chain it off and have a way with the compost site if it gets misused. I mean, we might have to have a, a gate for that parking lot so that we could, in the archery range where it does get closed if it gets misused, unfortunately. It's just, maybe they just go in hand in hand. Yeah.
All right.
All right.
Now, asset management software.
Okay, so, um, I've been researching, um, a cloud-based asset tracking software for about a month or so. So one goal with this would be to, um, essentially go through all the buildings that we have, which is the community center, fire station, water, wastewater, public works, building and shed, and kind of get an inventory of our assets, like what we have, like large and small equipment. The software that I've been looking at, it, it kind of, again, shows exactly what we have in each building. Then for certain items, we'd be able to, I mean, we could take pictures of each item. I mean, we wouldn't get down to like every hammer. But like, it would be, um, and then we can do like a maintenance schedule, and it kind of would track, you know, and provide the data to you, like, when, um, let's say a lawnmower comes for replacement, it would show all the history of the maintenance, kind of how many hours are on it. Just kind of that useful information that, um, I know the council has, um, asked for in the past, kind of.
Who's gonna put in the data?
It would be, it would be staffed, so it would be a lot of, it would be, I mean, we would have to do a lot of initial, um, training. I did talk to Public Works about it, cause it would be heavy on them more so, um, for their buildings, because they have four buildings.
Is this somebody we can hire an internship, internship for?
We've talked, we talked about that, and I think that'd be a great project for an intern.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, this.
Going forward, though, someone has to put the data in every time, I mean, who's.
Yeah, but it's that main first piece that you put in there.
Yeah, I think it's the main piece to get it all in there is that.
And there'd have to be a policy on how, you know, what's the dollar amount? Anything under two hundred, don't put in there, or five hundred or a thousand, you know, whatever.
Then you don't have an accurate history.
Well, I don't, I, I, I think the intent on a lot of these asset managements aren't to put every hammer in there. It's to get some of the, somewhere there's a dollar amount.
I think, yeah, when I talked to Public Works.
Getting lost, things aren't walking off. We, we know what we had.
Um, I mean, it, it helps, like, like, the one thing that I think, somebody told me, why don't you just keep a spreadsheet? The problem is the spreadsheets, you start so many of them, you don't know which one is most current. You can't share it between people. They, they can actually access, well, you can, but it, you never, I don't know.
Yeah, no, more so. More so.
It's on the cloud.
I think this is.
This would all be on the cloud, but.
I think this is spendy.
Yeah, so that's how much it would be, um, per year, um, to go this route. This is the only route I've thought about, started with. So I was just kind of getting an idea, um, kinda how much it would cost.
I would say we're not, we're not that big of a city yet to require that kind of software needed. We're still small enough. We have a small enough staff. We have, we don't have, you know, fifteen Public Works guys.
But asset tracking is.
And I agree now that I've seen the amount. I mean, that's, that's just too much.
I mean, if we had like, you know, ten Public Works guys and we had, you know, a bunch of people in the office, and we had police officers and stuff like that, I'd say, oh, totally, but. Fire department's taking care of their stuff, Public Works is taking care of their stuff, you guys know the stuff in the office, so. I'd just say it's too much right now for the size of our staff.
Okay. I mean, not to throw it out there that we're not tracking our assets right now, like, we do have a lot of paper documentation. It would just kind of put everything, again, in one place. But just was researching it, wanted to get some guidance on it, so.
Might have to be a spreadsheet.
I do have a question. Does one or the other of the two asset tracking software do a better job of the depreciation schedule and what that would be?
Oh, do they? Yeah, I, I did go through, um, kind of an information session on both of them, and they do do depreciation. Um, you can do, you can put that in there. Um, yep, so that is an option that you can put in there, so. But we, uh, we do track depreciation in other ways, too, so.
I, I think we should be tracking it, but I think a spreadsheet might have to work for now. That just seems too much for me.
Look into Google Docs. Cause you can share it with specific people and they have, it's live at the same time. And it's gonna be done. It's always saved. It's, you don't ever have to hit save. It's always saved.
All right, anything else? Then we'll adjourn.